I'd like to call the Hinkley Township Zoning Commission Special Meeting to Order on August 30th at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only and the written minutes and attachments, if any, will serve as the official record of this meeting. On behalf of our virtual audience, we ask that the public joining us in person to approach the podium in the event that they would like to speak. They will need to announce their name and address prior to speaking. Additionally, we ask the audience to save personal conversation for after the meeting as additional voices cause confusion for those attending virtually. Roll please.
Fisher.
Here.
Crew.
Here.
Marzullo.
Here.
Manley.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Engelman.
Here.
And this is already trustee virtual.
Trustee Augustine is virtual.
Thank you.
Perfect, and I would just like to note that there was a public notice of this meeting. The Hinkley Township Zoning Commission Special Meeting on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. The Hinkley Township Zoning Commission will hold a special meeting on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022 at 7:00 PM for the purpose of a work session. This meeting will be held at the administrative building located at 1410 Ridge Road. Perfect, with that said, I think I'd like to just begin where we left off last time, which was with short-term housing. And as we worked through it last time, we had started to develop some definitions. I think we had mostly met, agreed upon definitions. And we're working through what sort of restrictions or conditions, if any, we want to place on them, assuming they're conditional. We were looking at whether they should be conditional, permitted or not permitted, within the residential and business zones, districts, excuse me. And I think that that was, that was mostly where we ended last time. I think one of the things that we should try to focus on tonight when we start the meeting is, what is our goal with short-term housing? What are we trying to achieve with the regulations so we can craft those regulations accordingly? Are we concerned about noise? Are we concerned about traffic? Are we concerned about fire? What are our concerns that we're really trying to identify? And then develop some regulations to control those items?
I think that's a good question to start with. What are we trying to control? What are we, why, why are we looking at this in the first place? Is it because we've had complaints? Police have approached us, citizens have approached us, we've approached ourselves? What brought this before the commission to start?
Certainly, so last year when it was brought before the commission, I don't, I think it was really just seeing other communities and seeing that there were potential problems for this and exploring whether, you know, it made sense to, to do anything with our regulation in view of short-term housing. We've reached out to the police department and the police department has indicated that, as alone we reached out, at least that there were no complaints. Since we've begun to develop this, we have heard from a citizen that indicated that she's relatively close to a short-term housing and that there's been some noise concerns associated with that. And we, I think that that was, that's mostly what we've heard so far. We have heard from a few township residents that have in favor of short-term housing. And we've received some inquiries at the zoning office concerning whether short-term housing is permitted within the Hinkley Township. And so, you know, that's, that's the framework with which, with which we're working right now. Mr. Marzullo, do you have any, I mean, what, what are your thoughts as to what we are trying to achieve?
Initially, when we brought this up, the idea was to ensure that we had something. Really, we're looking for definitions as to what we considered short-term versus long-term. And it wasn't with the intent of putting restrictions or anything of that nature into the book so much as just, all right, hey, this is how we define it. I think just having the definition allows us to know that, all right, in the future, is this something that we do need to rein in or not? Initially, there was, there was actually a fair amount of, seemed like coordinated pushback on it that was kind of, kind of pushing and saying, well, it's, it's not a problem, so we don't need to even define it. And by taking the completely reactive state, that, that puts us behind the eight ball when it, when or if it becomes a problem. By having the definition in here, it gives us something that we can kind of wrap our heads around. And if we do start having an influx of complaints, so far we've had some. But it's enough to completely restrict and say, no, we don't want this in the township at all. I don't, I don't believe that. But at the same time, it's something that we need to consider and put some thought into. And I think that's what we've done here by, by creating these definitions. Is we have, as a commission, have sat here and chewed on this for a fair amount and said, yeah, you know, this is something that it's on the horizon. And at least here, we have something in here. I'm not a huge fan of trying to restrict people's property rights in any way. But at the same time, there's a point where you can abuse your property rights and therefore affect the folks around you.
I guess one of the things when I was hearing what you had to say is, you know, we're focused on definitions, but I don't think that we should have a definition in the book if it's never used outside of the definitions. Because then why is it even defined in our book at all? The only reason that you'd have a definition is because you've inserted that term somewhere else substantively and you need to understand how that word, what's meant by that word. So we could, if, if we are just concerned about having working definitions moving forward, we could keep those as, you know, off to the side, not incorporate them into our book, and then just continue to see how this goes and monitor it and not do anything more with short-term housing.
And by not having any restrictions and no definition, it's permitted?
Correct.
By having definitions and no restrictions, we have definitions.
It's still, that's, it's the same outcome, it's still permitted.
And if you go that path, then, then do you outright say it's permitted in case of the definition?
Let me clarify, it would be permitted wherever, it would likely be permitted wherever residential housing is permitted.
Fair.
It would only be permitted within the business district, for instance, in a dwelling above.
Fair, yeah, yeah, agreed.
Say that, say that, oh yeah, it would only be permitted in the business district?
No, in the business districts, the only place that would be permitted is where you are permitted to have a dwelling unit above the first floor. So that would be the B2 district and the B1 district would not be permitted at all. My point was, it, it just flows with wherever normal housing is permitted to be.
And what happened, do we know what the status is of the legislature that was?
I looked it up and, and it doesn't appear that anything's happened since the day when it moved out of committee. So it was voted out of committee and then it seems like it stalled.
Does that mean it's dead or that just?
We haven't had a full session yet.
I don't know, I think that they take a summer recess, so.
Yeah, they have a fall session coming up.
Right, that would be my guess.
I imagine it'll be short because of the election.
The, the one option would be to define short-term housing and make it permitted exactly where residential is. And at least then we have it in the book and we've permitted it to the same extent as every other, you know, housing unit is permitted. And the definitions are there, it's clear that the township allows it, but we're not putting any restrictions at all on it. Just an option if you wanted the definitions there, but you don't want to have a substantive pact.
I think I remember when we started talking about this, that we wanted the definitions on the book. We're then going to stall our discussions until a decision was made on the legislative issue, correct? So if we're still considering it, you know, and I'm in agreement with you that if you're going to define it, you might as well identify if it's permissible or not. It's in the book, otherwise it's just there, it's just a definition. So I agree that we have to have something.
So I will add one thing, you said that it would not be permissible in the B1 district?
Because dwelling units are permitted in the B2 district, not in B1.
But we will now have a dwelling unit in the B2 district?
That's going to fall within the senior housing, so you have to look at the Fair Housing Act for that one.
Correct, but you're, if, if we're saying it's only going to be permissible in the B2 and the, the residential districts, the B1 district is going to have a dwelling. And if someone says, hey, you know what, I want an Airbnb, my apartment, basically sublender.
If there.
Can, can we prevent that? Do we want to prevent that?
I think my general point was that it flows with wherever residential are permitted. I think that that's a pretty severe nuance because you have to get through the lease agreements, you'd have to get through the FHA requirements because remember that those units have to be rented by 55 years and older. So it's not as simple as saying you can put an Airbnb in the senior housing facility.
I would suspect they're going to have some kind of language to the renter that they don't have the right to sublet.
It's, it's very easy to say that, okay, yeah, there's going to be language, but there's no way that we can enforce that. Because the, the bottom line is if someone wants to just go onto Airbnb.com and put their apartment on, it's, it's going to be done. And is it, is it a recourse that we necessarily want to provide for the senior apartments?
I mean, if we said that it was permitted, short-term was permitted in the B2 but not the B1, I, I think that if someone wanted to put their house up, their apartment in the senior housing, again, what is the quick recourse on that? There really isn't any. The much more efficient recourse is actually through the contractual agreement that they have with the leasing office, which will have a vested interest in also not allowing subleases.
And my guess would be, it's only going to happen once. I can't believe the management, those apartments will be that asleep at the switch. I agree, it's possible, but I agree. Remember, they have, they have to adhere to the regulations of the federal government. So if it's rented out to somebody less than 55, doesn't that create a problem? If you're talking about the apartments.
I know when we were originally talking about it, we also had mentioned the idea of potentially having them register with the township, come in, fill out paperwork, file a fee and say, all right, yes, this property is being used as short-term rental.
So our zoning department has indicated that they believe that's challenging from a personal standpoint. The fire department has indicated that that would provide no benefit to them because they won't look at the list as an part of an emergency process. And same with police services. So I, I don't know what the value add to a registration process.
Well, if we have, even if we don't do that and it's conditional, they in effect have registered.
Correct.
So I would say that I think there would be a little bit of value add so that if there is a persistent noise complaint, then you have on file, all right, these are the people we need to reach out to.
Well, to Mr. Manley's point, that would be true of any conditional use. That would be if we put it in conditional, which would be really where the registration department would likely fall to, we already have knowledge of that information as part of the conditional application process. So we don't need a separate registration.
So is that kind of what you're proposing, to put it in a conditional use?
I strongly, believe strongly it should be under conditional. That way, you know, there is no fee for registering, but because it's conditional, here you are and we get the information we need. And the zoning inspector becomes the, the issue and leaves the police and fire out of it unless there's a problem.
I still go back to what is our objective? Is it a noise control objective? Is it a traffic controlled, traffic issue? What, what is the objective?
Well, other than control, I don't see any at this point because it's not an issue.
Right, it's not, there's no issues.
That's right.
However, we've opened, we've opened kind of a can of worms. I, I think that over two or three comprehensive plan things, we kept giving lip service to senior housing and they finally got one in, which is not what, at least I would hope they would have, but that's what it ended up. And some sharpie might come along here, we've kind of opened it up a little bit. But when we, if we're going to put it back to bed, I think we gotta, it wouldn't even bother me if we say that it's not permitted.
Go ahead, just approach the podium.
Cindy Engelman, Ridge Road. So I have a question, what about bed and breakfast?
So currently we have that defined, but we haven't done anything with that.
Is there a distinction between that and short-term rental?
We have two separate definitions. One would be an owner occupied, which we're saying is akin to a bed and breakfast because they're, the owner's there while other, while other, you know.
That's in those two definitions that you put in there. So that's the owner occupied. Owner occupied is bed and breakfast, so a bed and breakfast is allowable.
Currently?
Uh huh.
You'd have to, it would depend on the decision by the zoning inspector as to whether that counts as a home-based business, that would be conditional.
So, okay, so it's based on the business definition then?
Home-based.
Rather than?
Right, because we allow certain.
Just where we were before, where I said renting a unit is a business as well, short-term rental.
Right, last meeting you said that, right. So I'm just trying to understand, is there a distinction before you say whatever, you decide whatever you do?
What's the fee for conditional?
I think it's $4.50.
They just changed.
What's the fee for conditional? I think it's $4.50, but I'm not sure.
I think it's $500 now.
$500.
But it's.
Inflation.
Somewhere around there.
See, once they do it, it's done, it's like a, you've got a license to do it, that's it.
But only for, what is it, three years?
For the life of the property, it's for the life of the property.
Correct, unless it's not utilized in that manner.
Yeah, that's correct for me.
That's, that's only.
Three years.
That's discontinuance of use of illegal non-conforming. Currently, there is no discontinuance of use for a conditional.
Can you put as a condition, a condition that says every X years you come in and we renew this and we look for noise violations, things of that nature?
No, they wouldn't let us do that in the latter years, but they, they did agree that we could slip into there, that the zoning inspector by appointment would be permitted to come in every so often. As long as it wasn't, you know, repressive, I can't remember all the wording that was suggested to us in one of our seminars.
Conditional zoning certificates, $5.50. For residential districts, $7.50 for business. We could argue $7.50. For business districts, depends on where you're at.
Like business district, not for business.
I still, I still feel that we are all over the board on this. At one moment, I feel like we are moving it as a permitted use. I've felt that sometime that we're not going to do anything with this now. I hear that we should make it a conditional use. And I really think that until we work that out, we cannot define what sorts of conditions we're imposing on it, which goes back to what is the objective?
Well, the objective obviously is to control.
What are you trying to control? Are you trying to control noise? Are you trying to control traffic? Are you trying to control for safety?
Yes, 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 health, safety and welfare.
It sounds like you're trying to control the number of units permissible in, in it.
How? Because I don't.
Well, the, I don't see the safety issue as any different than a homeowner who purchases a home. What differences? Do, do they have to go through the hoops to have the fire department come out and look at their?
No.
Sprinkler system or any of that? No, not really. New homes, they do. They, they don't come out, but the new homes, the building, you know, is looked at in the plans. But, so that's, you know, what about the safety in the, the police department? For a residential, if I sell my house, do the police care who's purchasing it? What kind of folks are purchasing it or the noise or? So that's, I don't know.
Registered sex offender, they're going to care.
That's.
That's it.
It's, it's nuanced, yes. But it's, it's, it is, just to throw it out there. That's something that we need to know about and and if you're, you're running basically a motel next door to me, I don't want to know that.
Okay, you, you, okay. Aside from that example, they, they really don't care. And they don't even contact you when you sell your place. So what are, what are, what is the objective then? I mean, we don't really.
You could argue the same thing with traffic, you know, there's not necessarily an increase in traffic as a result of short-term housing versus a normal home. And so.
Right. So then that's why I said I, maybe the number, because I'm trying to figure out what it is.
The, the only distinction that I have really been able to identify in my mind is that a short-term housing tends to attract people who are there mostly for a vacation. When you're on vacation, maybe you stay up later, maybe you're a little louder, maybe you're outside more frequently. And so those things can impact your neighbor, mostly from a lighting standpoint because of potential lighting that's shining onto your neighbor's property or noise. But we've, as a commission, gone around and around about noise and our inability really to control noise levels. So that gives, that limits it down to potentially light control. But some neighbors have their spotlights on all night long anyway. So are we really having any effective light conditions that have, you know, that are necessitating amendment in our book for short-term?
I kind of look at the, when we're talking about noise control, I keep going, in my mind, going back to the screen park, which was quite a headache for the commission. Bill, well, you, you were still on, right?
For which?
The screen park over at Buzzard's Cove?
Yes.
That was, that was a pretty significant issue for us to deal with and we had no way of controlling it. Ultimately, we ended up adding in special events and all of that and, and had to get approved. I highly doubt anyone that's having a, a short-term rental and operating it as a business is going to routinely rent it out to disruptive neighbors.
I agree.
That, at least that's not the goal.
I agree.
But at the same time, if, if we are having issues where someone is doing that, shouldn't there be some form of saying, all right, you kind of lost that? Lost that opportunity?
Lost it, meaning if we don't put something into the books?
Again, if it's, if it's conditional and then they have to come back and renew it in three years and they've had 15 noise violations, noise complaints. Then we're saying, all right, you know what? No.
It's a, it's a tricky situation when it comes to noise because every, every argument that you can make for noise, I can make an argument of, you know, hundreds of other situations within the township that are also equally as noisy. And we, as a township, have proven already, we can't control noise. They tried, it got passed, it got ripped right back out because we can't, can't enforce it. And so if I'm relying on a condition that's got some provision in it based on noise and I have a neighbor who is just not happy about it to begin with, what's it take? A phone call to the police, I, we got noisy people over here again. How, how can I prove that? How, because, because at that point, it's a subjective, it's a subjective noisy neighbor, it's not objective. And so somebody who, who is just outright, doesn't want that, that, that type of use next door can easily, can easily thwart it. I'm just, I don't, I understand what brought this on.
And you know what, is, as far as if it's just someone being a troublesome neighbor and constantly calling the police to come out and look. By and large, I think that's captured in the police report, whether or not it is loud, not, not a decibel number, but certainly saying, yep, it's actually pretty loud up here. Or it's not very loud at all. Now, yeah, it's, it's very possible that it's, it's not a troublesome neighbor and, and they see a police squad car come, come up and everyone quiets down. It's possible. But if there are multiple different complaints, at some point, it's going to be either the boy who called Pride Wolf or, yeah, no, there's, there's been several founded reasons for us to be out here.
It, it becomes a matter of he said, she said, quite frankly.
But that's where the police reports actually would capture whether or not it was he said, she said.
Let's go, let's go back to the screen park though, because there were several neighbors that complained pretty loudly and pretty frequently in the screen park. And yet, nothing could be done to stop them from a noise standpoint.
That.
Nor could the conditional permit be denied. Or do we not?
Yeah, it was denied the next year.
Because of a special event. It was.
Could I interject to something?
Approach, please stand up.
Ouch, Sky Rusher, 1006 Bellis, right across from Buzzard Cove. We definitely complained to the police. Currently, the police tell us, don't call us, it's not a police matter. It's, it's noise ordinance, it's zoning regulation, it's zoning inspector, I assume. We don't know exactly what they're, what they're implying, but they tell us, don't call. So we don't call anymore. They left their music on overnight just a couple of days ago. There's nothing we can do.
Thank you.
Richard Pearl King wrote, to my knowledge, when the screen park, you were talking about the screen park, when neighbors made complaints, there was no police reports.
But the complaints were also known to the zoning department, it wasn't just the police department. The, the complaints were very well documented.
And to some of the trustees.
Correct.
If not all.
Correct. And.
Documented versus heard, I think, I don't, I don't know that we necessarily, we, we can't capture Mr. Pearl's facial expression there, but. um, facial expression there, but when you said they were well documented, he made, made a, uh, an expression that really, yeah, I think what, what he wants to get across is that, um, we knew about them. There was nothing in documentation, there was nothing written down.
We had plenty of minutes that people came up and spoke to. Who's written down?
When, in regards to police reports, we have an email from Augustine. Uh, basically getting a, a two years' worth of reports from the police. And there weren't any reports of noise issues at Buzzard Cove.
And yet you called.
I think there was one. Oh, yeah, yeah. So many times.
That would probably be the same on a short-term housing, right?
Very possibly. If there's no, if there's no, uh, noise ordinance, noise regulation, there's nothing that we can do.
I guess he's, what he's saying is if there's no noise regulation, there's really no noise complaint. Which is why it wasn't documented in the police report.
Even so, the police, so even if there was a noise ordinance within our, we're, we're not ordinances, we're zoning regulations. And even if there was a zoning regulation pertaining to noise, they went there. The police doesn't act upon zoning matters. Our zoning department acts upon them.
True.
So there would still, shouldn't it be a police report? Because there's no ordinance violation that's taking place. There's no statute within the state regulations that.
I don't know what the requirements are for the officers, when to file a report and when not to. I don't know. I know sometimes they warn you for tickets and nothing's filed. I know that.
Interject.
Checked up on that a few times. Just that, yeah, sorry to interrupt, interject. Uh, just a thought experiment. Buzzard Cove's across the street from me. I can put up giant speakers, blast music or sound, horrible shrieking stuff. And annoy them too. And there's nothing
Correct.
that anyone can do to prevent me from doing that.
Correct.
Yeah.
So I live next to the Brooklyn Exchange cabin and I hear music. Some, some weekends, it's nice music and other weekends, I wish they would get a different band. But I, you know, I have the same thing. I, I, I don't ever complain. I don't. It's, it's just, um, I, I built there. I knew about it before I built there. But, um, I, as you said, it's very subjective to the person. You know, my other neighbor says they don't hear anything and they're closer to it than I am. And yet, when I go out to the barn in the evening, I can hear it perfectly. I sit out there with the lawn chair sometimes, just listening to the bands.
And I thought that was Mr. Spelman's point, right? You, you, there's a hundred of different noise issues that occur. It could be fireworks, it could be loud animals that you have right next door to you.
Four-wheelers.
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 I, I just, I don't. I understand both sides of this and I don't see, I don't see the value in in pursuing it at this time. You made a really good point. You sat over there and said, sometimes it seems like we're, 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 we're like, let's move on. And then next thing you know, we're, we're talking conditions and I think we're just all over the road on this one. I, like I said, I don't. I, i- if it's, if it's noise is what we're going after, just forget it. I, it's a dead, to me, that's a dead end. If there's something else traffic related, I, I don't see that. I would be interested in maybe looking at it further in, in terms of, okay. Like bed and breakfast to me, I think is something that, that is of interest and, and putting some condition around that. But, but just a general short-term rental, like I, I just, I don't feel it.
And see, I think short-term rentals versus bed and breakfast should be treated, treated the same. That's just me. It's a business. Short-term rental's a business. If I run out my house for fifteen days or thirty days, it's the same as renting out a room. And who's to say, who's to say I'm actually going to be there? I could call a B and B, but who's going to say I'm going to be there? So my thing is if you do it, I want, I'd like them treated similarly. Because I think it's still a business and then it should be treated that way. But I'm, you know. I don't have any. I'm not leaning towards any one way. But it sounds like, based on the question that was presented, why are we doing this? We still don't know.
Which, which would suggest we ought to move on to something else. I agree.
I think we still have to answer the question of, do we keep the definitions and, and explicitly call it permitted? Or do we do nothing? No definitions and nor put anything in there and we move on?
Well, even if you don't put the definitions, it's permit, or it's allowable then, right?
Yeah.
Because it's not in there.
Yeah, a number of years ago, we went through an effort to make the zoning, I'll call it more, more readable. As readable as it's better readable as any zoning document can be. It's not a fun read, but, but to make it more friendly. And, and so this is something that at least if there's, I, that, that's the only perspective that I can think of of why we would want to do that is there it's defined. And we've said, explicitly said it. And we put a definition behind it. And I think to that point, it provides some clarity to people who might be interested in purchasing a property in Hinckley and want to know whether short-term rental is or isn't permitted. Because now we can refer to the book and say it's permitted. Flip side to that is, I worry particularly about bed and breakfasts, you know. The bed, bed and breakfast can potentially turn into a hotel. Um, depending on, if you don't have any restrictions and you just have the definition of a bed and breakfast without anything else. I worry that someone comes in and they argue, look, this is a bed and breakfast and really it's a little bit bigger than what might want as a bed and breakfast. So I would suggest not even including the definitions. We'll take them back out. We'll keep them on the side and, you know, next set of text amendments or a few times down the road. If we're interested in this topic again, we pull them up when we have our working definitions to start from again.
My, my only concern with that is kind of piggybacking off of what Michelle said, um, if we're treating short-term owner occupied and short-term rental similarly. We already know that there are short-term rentals in the community. And which, per Michelle's definition, is a business. And we're doing nothing about it. So does that set the precedence of, alright, if someone wants to operate a B and B out of their house, they can. Because we already know about this other business that's operating and we're not doing anything about it. How can we impose it on this business?
Do you define short-term rentals explicitly as a home-based business or, or something like that? And I think there's some requirements around applying for.
If we do that, it's demonstration of that or something.
I don't, again, I don't know if there's value in it.
Because I, I'm, if, if we just totally remove it.
Hmm. Do we know that there aren't any bed and breakfasts? Do we know that no one's renting out a room?
Oh, no, I don't know.
I don't know that. So, I mean, there's the potential that that could, the same scenario, you said, we know that short-term rentals are already taking place. It very well could be short-term.
There could be a bed and breakfast. And as long as the commission's okay with saying, hey, if there's a B and B running, we find out about it, we're just going to ignore it. I just, um, I think that would be a disservice to the residents if someone starts running a B and B in their neighborhood.
Cindy Engelmann. So just as a point of reference, I went and looked at some other townships' um, zoning resolutions on the matter. And some of them simply define short-term rental and do nothing about it. And I believe Boardman Township was one of those that you referenced. Others, um, have a definition and also define what is the maximum number of people who may be occupying that rental based upon how many bedrooms there are. They're not necessarily, um, stating that they're permitted, conditional, but they're starting to set, I think, a structure. Maybe for future purposes, or at least to get on the books, the fact that they acknowledge they exist. And in the event that the industry blossoms, I don't know.
But they still can't do anything with that until such time as they've actually implemented some substantive.
Right, but, but that's what I'm just seeing with the different townships is that, and you know, if I look at it as these townships have consultants in planning and zoning and whatever. And they're all kind of doing the same thing. I, I kind of feel that there's maybe just a pattern developing that suggests that they may all be in the same predicament. We are, we don't even know what we want to do or if we can do anything. But let's just define it so that we have an agreement as to what a short-term rental is. Um, point of reference, you know, so.
That's a good point, Cindy. Do you remember that spreadsheet I sent you guys?
Hmm, I remember it.
It had all that on there. I went from every, I looked at every township.
Uh huh.
It looked for short-term rentals.
Okay.
And it had every, whether or not it was allowed. And the definite, if they had it defined and if it was conditional or permitted.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure where I have that, but I did do that. Quite a few of them. They had it on their books that I remember.
Hmm. At least the definition is what I've seen. Not that they all said anything about it, but just FYI.
See if I can pull that up.
Can you make it a permitted use with conditions stated? As a, as a means of giving more guidance? So if we're looking at bed and breakfast, we wanted to say, I, I think that you could define a bed and, you could, within the definition, actually probably say that, you know, a bed and breakfast has, or owner occupied rental has no more than five. You can't, you can't put regulation in a definition. But we're defining what the bed and breakfast is, because anything more would be a hotel. So if you're trying to distinguish between a hotel, right? So my question is, what's the difference between a short-term owner occupied rental and hotel? And so I think that we could define a bed and breakfast as being, having fewer than a certain number of rentable rooms. And I think that would still be within the definition.
Couldn't, couldn't you do it with along those lines, five, six lives, whatever people? Anything in excess of that would be considered a business and let the business area take care of it.
Well, I'm, I'm just glancing, I'm glancing in the R section in my search. I'm stepping beyond R two dot two, permitted uses, detached single-family dwellings, model homes. Follow, uh, model homes are four bullet points of
Right.
what it is, what it could do, what, what you can do. Accessory buildings and structures, same thing, five, five bullet points in there.
Hmm.
And then accessory uses. Which, just a few bullet points under that as well. Where they're outright saying, this is an R two district and these are alternate permitted used in, uses and, and defined within those uses that are a set number of things that describe what, what you're permitted.
So I found my, my spreadsheet. So Granger Township has them defined. Um, all of them, bed and breakfast, boarding house, dwelling, dwelling, single family, dwelling, two family. What a family is. And they also define hotels, motels and lodging house. All of them. I'd have to pull it up to, to look at whether or not they're permitted uses or, um, conditional.
It's almost like they have an entire section on transient housing.
This was some, this was a while ago and I hadn't, I forgot about that I did that until tonight. Um, but you know, there are quite a few of them that, and I think we also started this when we're looking at in-law suites. Because there's other townships that have al- also the in-law suites as well. Which, then they've converted to their bed and breakfasts, right? Um, but it does look like quite a few of the townships have, have these definitions, bed and breakfast. Um, Litchfield Township has it, um, uh, as well. And I believe these are conditional for.
But see, they're not just defining it then, they're actually using it for something. They're defined, they're specifying whether it's permitted or conditional. They're not just taking a definition.
Correct. No, I can't say that for all of them.
Right.
But I, the ones that I
Looking at right now.
I, I have identified. Granger, I didn't write that in here. So I'd have to pull up Granger to see if, where they're even permitted, or if these were just defined. I have the link in it. And your hotspot asked me if I wanted to join, but I didn't. But I have the link if you want.
There's, uh, there's guest access here to.
Is there? Okay.
So we are now forty-eight minutes into a conversation on this. Plus the three or four meetings that we had last year and this year on this topic. And I'm open to moving in any direction. I just want to hear what direction this commission would like to move in. So we can hopefully.
For one, I, I, I think it would be, um, unfortunate if we just completely removed it from the definitions. Um, I understand your, your preference of not having it unless there's, there's an action on it. But I also know that if it's kept in notes and then they need it in three years or five years, we don't know if any of us will still be on the board and all of that will be gone. And then they're starting from scratch again. Whereas if it's in there, it's something that they can at least build upon. Um, as far as restricting it or allowing it, um, I don't, I don't really have a super strong preference one way or the other. I think the, the short-term owner occupied, um, is something that would have to be conditional. And that would have to be registered.
In residence.
Yes, and it would have to be registered through the township.
Conditional would be registered.
No.
I think if we tell, if we tell people in the township, you gotta pay five hundred bucks, come in and go through the process of getting a conditional for this. I think we'll have what we have today, which is, I think I'm just going to go ahead and do it.
Because they're aware we don't enforce it.
But what repercussion is there?
Yeah.
Well, what would be the repercussion? Is there anything?
Today, no. Put it in as a conditional.
So then, so then why do we have people file for conditional anything? Because there's no repercussion to it.
There, there are potential for repercussions, but you've got a lengthy court battle, you have to seek injunction.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, I could take you to dozens of places. It's just some in, within a mile of us that should be cited and they're not.
Right.
Because they don't want to go through that process.
Right.
That's required, you know, they send them letters, they do this. And they've done it before. And then the letters run out and then somebody else starts it all over again. Well, those people see that it's a toothless tagger and they, they've had these letters before. I, I think this guy up here on Center Road, he's probably gotten letters.
I think we had one on
You got one on.
River Road, they sent letters for like twenty years. They finally took action on it. But it's been a very long time coming before.
So, you know, it's just, it's a frustrating system. I mean, that, that, and no one follows up as a trustee's turnover the next, you know. And, and the zoning inspectors, for the most part, don't want to be bothered with it because it's, it's such a negative situation. I mean, there's nothing glamorous about going out and telling somebody, if you don't do this, we have to do this.
So once again, are we at definitions only at this point? Uh, and advance those to the planning commission and see what they have to say and what legal has to say. And maybe they tell us, take them out, maybe they say you can leave them in. maybe they tell us, take them out, maybe they say you can leave them in. I don't know what they'll say.
Or expand them.
Or expand them, or do we not do anything with it at all?
Hey, you can leave them in and we can take them out later, but at least that way planning services looks at them and says, oh, those are some really good definitions. You should probably do something with those. Or don't, don't remove them.
So is that what we want to do?
Yeah, I think so. It's a good idea. Use, use the definitions, submit them, see what happens.
So definitions only.
Good. Progress. I feel like we could keep this conversation going.
We could. It actually kind of makes like with what Michelle was bringing up about the finding motel, hotel, Holiday Inn. Right. Alright. So I mean, just maybe we do consider expanding a section into transient housing. Where it's permissible, where it's not. What's okay, what's not?
I, I don't think that's a bad idea. I don't know if it warrants a whole section. I, I don't know, like this, this.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking about, you know, some of the undeveloped business properties, which is frankly, we probably want anything other than a short term rental.
Yeah.
And you know, do, do we allow it or not in those sections? Do we want to? And I'm not saying that Hilton's coming and knocking down our door to build a Hampton Inn over on West One Thirty in Boston, but maybe they are.
Why don't we maybe work on a little bit of a lighter topic now that we're, we're doing definitions for now? And then we'll review it and if, Mr. Marzola, if you want to take the lead on that transient housing section, I would be more than willing to. So work through that. Once we, let's work through this set and then we'll work on that. So if we can, within the solar energy section, and I'll direct you to eighteen point five. In eighteen point five, there was this language that said accessory components shall be screened from view from the public right of way and adjacent properties. And so I think it was late last year, there was some discussion. And as we had that discussion, quite frankly, this was a section that was proposed by three fifty Hinckley and I think that no one really considered whether there was really a need for screening or not. And as we had this discussion, we were wondering why for solar panels and when, I think as well, screenings required for accessory components when, and really no other sections of our book, screening is a requirement. So that's why I've proposed striking through section, part J.
Didn't we already talk about and agree to those changes?
We said we were going to have the discussion, but no one, we haven't actually looked at the text and said, yes, this is okay to move forward. But I thought that the general consensus was.
I thought we did. And we said we would move it towards, once we have a bunch of other.
Right, movement, right. And that's now.
No, but I thought we agreed to it.
Yeah, we haven't.
We didn't?
I don't think so.
Mr. Pearl, he kept asking me to put it back on the agenda because I haven't had it, we haven't had that discussion. We've just said we will do this. And I think the general consensus is yes, well.
So I think, I think where we're getting lost here is that we as a commission agreed, yes, we're going to strike J. That, that is going to happen in the next text amendment. And so it dropped off of the agenda. But we knew moving forward in the next text amendment that J is struck. We, we as a commission agreed that yes, we're going to take that out, but we didn't have a motion and everything with a text amendment.
We didn't have a working set of text amendments yet.
Correct.
Right.
So yeah, we already agreed, we're going to remove J.
Right.
What is an accessory component as it relates to solar?
That was my question.
The accessory components, I believe, were the, the, the panels, not the, not the solar panels. Like your electrical box, your switches and those sorts of things are considered the accessory components.
Is that stuff generally large?
I have a large switch.
Yeah. Is it shielded? Doesn't have proper screening?
Honestly, it doesn't need it. It's not an industrial.
Yeah. Right. And it's still, you, you have to go through electrical inspections and things like that. So if there's any concern for safety, the electrical inspectors.
And if, if I recall correctly, when we put it in, it was, it was almost arbitrary that we added the screening. Because to your point, there is, the only other place that it's, that screening is mentioned is actually in business. Screening from, but yeah, there's nothing in the residential area saying you have to screen a barn from your neighbors or anything along those lines.
There's nothing in here that would say, oh, I have underground utilities that run to one of those big giant green boxes and we need to screen that.
Correct.
So that's the kind of equivalent that we're making.
Yep, exactly.
Richard Pearl King Road, and I'm speaking, I'm a spokesperson for three fifty Hinckley. There were two sections when we were given the boilerplate wording for solar arrays. One section was what became eighteen point five J and eighteen point six J, which was the screening that we're talking about now. And three fifty Hinckley asked the zoning commission to identify the accessory components that the current code is screening. At the same time, we were questioning eighteen point five I and eighteen point six I, which says you must secure electrical and control equipment. And we were asking, why must it be secured when it's already, when that would be a safety hazard? That the homeowner cannot go out there and turn it off if there's a padlock on it and he's not there. His spouse cannot go out and turn it off. Or if the fire department comes, they actually have to go get bolt cutters to turn it off. So those two things are what three fifty Hinckley were asking the zoning commission to strike. And if anyone would like to visit my solar array or a ground mounted solar array, I have a wall mounted array. You're welcome to come to my house and I'll show you those components. My component is a little box. It's about eight inches by six inches with a lever. And yes, if you put the lever down and turn it off, you can put a padlock through there, which I would do if I was working on that equipment. So that somebody couldn't inadvertently turn it on. It's called a lockout. But I would never put the lock on there when I see no reason to lock it out to secure it. So we were asking that you strike the secure.
What, how much voltage?
Two one tenths, two twenty total.
And so I think that's, that's the idea behind the, behind securing it. I understand what you're saying also. Because in order to get into the two twenty coming into your home, you either have to dig or go into one of the big green transformers, which is secured.
Say that again.
So the, the two twenty that's going into your home.
Yes.
From the, from the solar panel.
Goes to, oh. Okay.
Alright. It's not piped directly into the home. You have a switch outside of the home that it goes into and then goes into the home, correct?
Correct. It goes to a control box right next to the circuit breaker box, my service panel. And the energy goes into my service panel.
But is the, is the control panel exterior, on the exterior of the home or interior?
The on off switch is exterior. The control panel is interior, but it doesn't have to be.
Okay, and I, I guess what I'm thinking is building off of Bill's example, there's like the two twenty coming into my house is coming from a giant green transformer at the corner of my lot. It's going over three feet under, deep into the ground and then coming into my home from there.
First it goes to the electric meter, then it comes in.
Correct. Goes to the electric meter first, which is completely secured all the way up.
Now you can remove the electric meter with a, you can remove it with a screwdriver. There's no padlock.
Okay. Okay. I'll be fine.
I think. How about continuing the labeling requirement, but not the securing requirement? Because that limitation says labeled and secured.
I, I don't know the.
First energy requirement.
So then it would have been a problem if we kept it. I, I don't think that we should have our requirements. This is going back to the discussion we had before is that, right, we, we should make sure our regulations don't necess, you know, while we want them to comply with what first energy has. We don't want to rely on first energy if they can change their regulations and then we've beaten line catch up.
So then, so you're saying we're most labeling it as well?
No, I'm suggesting keeping the labeling. That limitation says ground mounted electrical and control equipment shall be labeled and secured to prevent unauthorized access. And I would suggest keeping I, but deleting the unsecured to prevent unauthorized access. So we just say ground mounted electrical and control equipment shall be labeled. That way, safety forces know where it is and identify it because unlike an electrical meter where they know it, I'd be able to identify it. They might not readily identify solar panel.
Are all, are all solar panels governed by the electric company?
If you're tied into the grid, yes. And of course, there was an inspect, inspection from the Medina County Electrical Department.
So we, we could strike that and just say something to the effect that it complies with whatever.
Current Medina County electrical.
I don't even know what that requires. I mean, that, that's inherent. They have to do that anyway. So why do we, like we all say for a home that it must comply with.
He just said it does. What if it's off the grid? I have a, I have a barn in my backyard. I want to put some electrical, some solar panels up on there.
You were, you were saying that you don't have to go to first synergy, but you still, even for an off the grid one, you still have to get a building permit, I would assume, correct? An electrical permit?
Building permit, no, electrical permit only, not a building.
But electrical you would.
An electrical permit.
I can't imagine you wouldn't because you're dealing with high voltage electric.
I don't know that it's considered high.
You have to ask the electrical department.
Good answer.
Cindy, hang on. So just as maybe a similar type situation, new septic systems that are put in, they have electrical. You require screening, labeling or anything on that? That's, you know, Medina County, the health department, sanitary is going to take care of that. Oh, they, they do, right, they do. So I would just say it's analogous.
Boilerplate we inherited in three fifty Hinckley brought it up when we were first going through the solar arrays. But we were more focused on trying to get wall mounted acceptable. And so we were focused on the big things and had to let the little things go. And when we came back the second time and redid the wall mounted. That's when we brought it up again late into, late in the meeting, actually late in the hearing. When Lisa Ruth words said, why are you making it screen and please screen the arrays? That's going to decrease the efficiency of these. And that's when three fifty Hinckley came back again and said, can we think about screening these two things at the other time?
Right.
We were a little late coming with that information.
And I don't think any of us are disagreeing with the screening aspect.
That's a, that's a relatively straightforward.
The three fifty Hinckley would like to see both of these I and eighteen point five and eighteen point six simply struck.
I and J, right? Not the whole section.
Correct.
Correct. Eighteen point five J and eighteen point six J and eighteen point five I and eighteen point six I.
I don't have any problems striking it. I don't, the, the, I know you mentioned you should keep labeling in there, but as Cindy mentioned, I have one of those septic systems with the electric and there's nothing labeled on it. Other than I know that button means this, but I mean, there's labeling. Why would we put that restriction here if we're not putting the labeling restriction on other aspects?
What, what are we labeling on this?
The switch.
The control panel. What does the label have to look like? How big? But is that it? Or are we requiring some label that says this is two hundred and twenty volts and I'm like, I'm dying.
So at my electric meter, which is different, which is in the north side of the home and my on off switch for the array is on the southeast side of the home. At the electric meter, there is a plaque that says there is a photovoltaic. It's like a warning plaque to the fire department or the electrical department that there is a photo voltaic array associated with this meter and it's on the east side of the house.
You put that there because of this or you put that there because the electrical company said you have to do?
The electric company says you have to do it. First energy said that. And then the switch itself is, also has a plaque that basically says on off. Or photovoltaic array on off.
I don't see any issue with it. It's confusing.
I, I think what three fifty is asking for is asking the zoning commission to encourage and make it simple for homeowners and residents to provide arrays.
So let me see, we are striking, that was. So from eighteen point five and eighteen point six, we're striking I and J. And then I thought I saw somewhere else. Also in eighteen seven G, we're going to strike the last sentence, which similarly says accessory components shall be screened from view from public right of way and adjacent properties. We'll leave the rest of the accessory component requirements there.
That also has the, the labeling commented.
Thank you. Move that as well. And eighteen point eight, that's just tying into the business districts. So we had it that they were permitted roof mounted, were permitted in the B one, B two and B three, B, B one and B two. So we're, I just amended it to include the B three consistent with our discussion that we would just clone the B two. Eighteen point eight also includes the ground mounted electrical equipment shall be labeled and secured to prevent unauthorized access. We'll delete that. And also the accessory component shall be screened from view from public right of way and adjacent residential properties. And I think that that deals with the entire alternative energy section proposed amendments outside of any typographical errors which are addressed. Okay. Perfect. I'd like to deal with a couple miscellaneous things and they're going to kind of mold together anyway. If we can turn to section four, four point nine. Four point nine deals with fences. Thank you, Mr. Pearl. Four point nine deals with fences. The zoning department used to require a no fee permit for fences. I thought that was being amended, although it's eight seventeen twenty twenty two. It's not, so I'll check on that again. Anyway, there was discussion about fences requiring the same fee as other accessory structures. Because the same sort of inspection is required when you build a fence as when you build any other accessory structure. So the township was trying to recoup the cost for the fence in the same way as any other accessory structure. It's a seventy five dollar fee. This section had a no fee permit shall be required from the township. So they just suggested that we remove that and that way the township has the option to charge a fee for fencing permits in the same way as any other accessory structure.
Isn't there a county regulation of excess of six feet? Or at least I believe there was.
You have to get a building permit.
Building behalf of sex over six feet.
So that portion is still being maintained. So that portion is still being maintained. If any fence over six feet in height will require a building permit. But then the suggestion, the portion that they're suggesting striking is this latter portion, a no fee permit shall be required.
And they want to add a fee.
They want to be able to have the option to provide the fee.
What if it's agriculture?
It's agriculture, you don't have to go through zoning.
Right, that's what I.
That, that, the zoning doesn't apply anyway.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page.
Correct.
What determines if it's agriculture?
Any concerns with that?
What determines if it's agriculture?
Great question.
Um. Or C.
Well, yes, but let me tell you about a situation that's recently arisen. Someone has a one acre parcel of land. They wanted to build a structure that would not meet the zoning regulations and I think it also would have meet the building regulations, but don't quote me. Initially, they want to have three cows on this one acre parcel. The zoning department initially denied them, uh, finding that they didn't qualify for an agricultural use. They then contacted the Ohio Agricultural, Ohio State's Agriculture Center. They said, yeah, that counts as agriculture. And so as a result, this person is going to be able to build a subpar structure on one acre of land and have their three cows right next to their neighbor.
Barn on a one acre.
They were arguing that it will also cost them for three to four, they said several extra thousand dollars to comply with the, this, if they don't have this agricultural existence.
Is that not a one acre parcel in an R2 district or an R1 district, a non-conforming?
All, all of Hinkley is, is zoned agricultural.
Correct. Wow.
So that's.
I don't know how they deny it wasn't agricultural though. Cows are obviously agricultural. That I don't understand.
Yeah, people just didn't want it on the, on the property, I'm guessing.
Well, I, I get that, but how can you deny that it's not agricultural?
To do with the fact that it was being, I, I, I can't tell you all of the details. But my, my general point was that it's very hard for us to say something not agricultural. I mean, on, I don't think there are very many people that would say cows should be on a one acre parcel where there's whole houses right next door.
They used to be, they, and then I'm not saying, I don't know about Hinkley. I don't think so, but a requirement for large.
Certain amount of.
Animals. Yeah. I, I don't know Hinkley because I, I met it and I didn't.
Does, so does anyone have any objection with the striking of the fee second from 4.9? I'll clarify because I thought we just were through the schedule and for some reason I thought that they were now charging a fee for fences or they wanted to, maybe they decide not to because of the language, but.
The, the original, you were, I think, original intent was there would be no fee that the county, if it was an issue, again, health, welfare and safety, the county would take care of it. So what they're asking for is permission to levy a fee if they, if they find, if they want to.
They still have to inspect fences in the same way as every other accessory structure. But they can't recover the fee for that. So they're, they're, you know, they're performing work, but they don't have the ability to recover a fee.
Why, why, why are they, I, I didn't realize they were inspecting fences.
It's an accessory structure.
Not necessarily inspecting the fence, but, but ensuring it's, is off.
Compris with the zoning requirements.
Right.
So they're, they're surveying it. I mean, for example, the situation on Boston Road where the fence was actually almost in the street with a safety hazard a couple of years ago and they, they were not completely unaware of it in the zoning office. Until somebody could.
Well, then they probably didn't submit a application like they should have.
I think this came in after that. I, I don't remember exactly, but I think they weren't addressing fences really per se. But, you know, if they, if they, if they're actually going out and doing something, I can't believe they're surveying.
I don't think they're surveying.
Well, I bow and I.
The inspection is before the fence is installed, to make sure it's.
Secure. Okay.
That's, that's my experience.
And it has to be 15 feet off the property.
We're going to have a discussion on that. Yes, technically, yes, but.
No, it can be right on.
It's an accessory, that, that's the issue. It's an accessory structure.
So just the same, just the same way we have lakes as accessory structures.
Yes.
So a fence has to be 50 feet off.
Take a look. Because I'm proposing an amendment to that next.
Is that true? I, I can't believe that that would be true.
Well, because it's being viewed as an accessory structure.
Accessory structure.
So accessory structure must be 15 feet off.
Correct.
Well, there need to be a corresponding change to the fees.
Except for if it's agricultural.
Because right now it says there's no fee for fences.
I'm going to verify that, but no, we are just saying, we're just removing that language. The township trustees right past the resolution on the fees.
Gotcha.
So.
If you want to look, it's easy under, under news.
I have it.
Okay.
Yeah. I know. It's showing 815, but that's why I thought we had a discussion on that, so I'm going to verify that. Yeah, I guess I don't see it explicitly called out differently. No. So I'll, I'll talk to the zoning again because we have to, we have through Thursday. So I'll confirm my understanding on the fee for, for, uh, fences. And then I'll have, uh, I'll follow up with you on Wednesday, on Thursday regarding fencing. If we can turn to sections 4.5, which is a similar use finding. I don't recall and I don't know that the township has experienced many, uh, similar use finding requirements or had requests for a similar use finding. But if you look at it as it's currently written, it says the township, uh, zoning commission may grant a similar use finding upon concluding that the requested use in the zone within which it is proposed to be located meets the following criteria. It is not inconsistent with the purpose and intent. It is similar to one or more uses permitted in the zone. Its operation is compatible with other permitted uses in the zone. It will further the objectives of said zone. It will not cause substantial injury or impair the present or potential use of properties. It will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience and welfare. It will not generate substantial addition, additional traffic congestion or other permitted uses in said zone. I look at that and I see that that's very similar to the Duncan factors and something that the Board of Appeals should be looking at, not us. This seems like a judicial findings, uh, not a commission legislative finding. And so when we, we've had some discussion, the zoning department and I, and we thought that that made more sense to be a function of the Board of Zoning Appeals, not the zoning commission.
Keep it, but change that first sentence.
Correct. So the Township Board of Zoning Appeals may grant instead of the Township Zoning Commission may grant. It's a simple word change, but, um, we've not reached out to the prosecutor on that, so we'll let them review it. But again, I think that this is more judicial in nature. Have we ever had anybody take us up on this section?
I don't think so.
Yes.
Have we?
Yep.
For what?
When we started, um, talking about, um, the potential bus garage going in at, um, West 130th and 303. We started talking about, all right, does, is this considered a similar use?
Like, I remember why we put this in there was because we weren't going to sit there and spell everything out within the sections and the matrices.
I think it makes perfect sense and I think we actually should be using it more than what we are.
But I agree, it, it is not of, in fact, I don't even think legally the zoning commission can weigh in on that once it's become a part of the legislation. So the BCA seems, seems appropriate.
Perfect. If there are no objections, I'll move on to the next section. Chapter 5, 7.2 is just the listing of the zoning districts.
So one of, so be, before we blow past the section four, one of the notes I had in here was, um, a question about a process of reporting and following up on the nuisance regs. And I think that ties directly into everything that we were talking about earlier. With the, um, with the short term rentals. Because we do specifically say nuisance is prohibited. And which.
Where are you looking specifically?
Uh, section 4.0. The authorization or any use herein does not authorize its use in a manner that is noxious, dangerous or offensive by reason of odor, dust, smoke, noise, fumes or vibration. So we clearly have a noise nuisance regulation. But we have no way of following up or filing it or anything of that nature. It to include dust, smoke, noise, all of it. And I don't know if we want to expand that to show some sort of, um, method to at least capture any sort of complaints. Because right now we're saying, ah, you're not allowed to be, you're not allowed to burn tires on your, on your yard when it's, when it's blown into your neighbor's yard and if you do it, oh, well, we can't do anything about it.
Give suggestion language?
No. What can you, I mean, what, what can you possibly do with that?
Yeah, I don't.
To me, it's a, it's a.
It's a generic statement here.
Yeah, it's, it's pointing out the obvious and saying, please, you know, we're not explicitly granting you anything in here, but further down throughout the code, we do in many, you know, other places go on to elaborate upon, you know, things like this. It's part of conditions. I don't, is this, maybe this is a message to the BCA.
So I mean, I, I guess it's, it, I, is, is there any way, is there anything down here at town hall that captures nuisance complaints?
That's a good question.
Because, I, I mean, we all know that there are certain nuisances within the township that lots of people have complained about, but is it captured and has there ever been anything done about it?
Well, so, so there's probably two forms and whether they're consistent or not, it's questionable. But, you know, the zoning department gets their complaints and that's what generates half of the things that they go out and do, you know, and look at. And I, I think they keep a log of, of that type of stuff. We can confirm that.
I mean, has anyone on the commission ever seen said log?
No. And I asked about that, remember, I asked about that a while ago. It's been a couple of years, that why isn't a log maintained when the trustees receive complaints or concerns?
And we get, we get.
That we know what's going on.
Run down.
It's not being kept. At least it wasn't back then.
Run down on, on violations and complaints as well.
So the only way we would hear about it is if it was brought to us.
Well, I'd be shocked if that was the case, like, that they don't actually keep a log of, of that type of thing.
Bet you barely know.
It wasn't a couple of years ago whenever I asked about it.
So I can certainly ask, um, and have an answer by Thursday's meeting. I think one of the things that we're going to have to decide is do we move, put that in the next text amendment? Do we hold this text amendment? But remember, if we don't vote on Thursday for a motion on this one, we can't do it till January. Or we, we can't move forward till January, I should say.
Why was that?
Because of the way our schedule aligns and planning commission schedule aligns.
Will we get through all the amendments before the end of the day Thursday?
I think we will, pretty close now. Other than, I think we will, we'll see.
All right.
Unless you pull up a lot of other proposals.
I've, I've got notes.
Have, then have the language ready, ready for us to at least work off of. Because I think that that's, you know what, we can, we could go through and continue to refine and refine and refine this book, but we need to set some stages and do it piece by piece and not work through every section at once.
What would we do with the log if there was a nuisance log?
Well, it would seem to me, it would seem to me, if you're getting some, some of these same things, maybe there's something you know, tweak the book somehow to.
But that seems to me like now I'm telling, now I'm telling the government how it should run itself in this township.
Well, they're telling us how to live.
Yeah.
Shouldn't residents be telling us?
I'm giving operational procedure. It just seems like operational procedure at that time, like zoning department, you need to start keeping a log.
Well, I, I think you have to ask, I, I'm not so sure it should be a zoning amendment. I think you have to ask the trustees if they would. Because then zoning inspector doesn't report to us, anyway, shape and form.
And, you know, I, I think if you look at these, I think odor, dust, smoke, fumes are all EPA controlled as well. So your first, your, your, your primary enforcer is likely to be the EPA, not us because we don't have the mechanisms to judge any of that.
Well, but they have, somebody has to know that.
So I, I think my, my point in bringing this up though, is that if we are consistently getting complaints about a specific topic, that should really dictate, all right, these are the topics we as a commission need to start tackling. Not, you know what, maybe we, maybe we, we wouldn't have even done the short term rentals if we're working on stuff that we had a backlog of complaints about.
I think that the, at least, you know, so far in my experience, the, the zoning department is excellent notifying us on what they're seeing. That said, I don't know that there's a formal log of any sort and maybe there should be. And we'll ask the zoning department what they do with this or, or the trustees. I mean, it might not, you know, people might not be complaining to the zoning department because it might not be a zoning function. I don't know. But we can reach out and understand what they do. I mean, a, any of you can call at any point our zoning department and understand the, the mechanisms by which these things are controlled or logged.
I, I think what happens from my observation is they contact a trustee who in turn then contacts the zoning inspector to kind of be brought up to date. If the trustee does not contact the zoning inspector, I can see there would be, there may not be any kind of record. I would doubt though, the zoning inspector has a log or any, might have a few sheets on a couple of different specific situations that stand out, but for some, I just don't see it as a very formal thing.
And to me, it just seems as.
I mean, it'd be nice if it were.
It, it could be a data analysis tool for us.
Yeah, I do, I agree, that'd be a nice thing to have, but I think we have to talk to the liaison to ask him or her or her currently to see if we can institute this, that it would be beneficial to, to us and ultimately to the community.
That's not a problem. To move on or?
Now, as a physicist, I can read vibrations and say light would fall under that as well. But shouldn't light be included specifically in that 4.8 as well? I could set up a whole bunch of lights shining straight at someone's house. I could have a solar panel that's reflecting light. I know, I know, it was in here, like, yeah. That's not going to happen, but yeah, light, vibrations. I could argue that's light too.
Can I add one more thing? And, um, about two, three years ago, my neighbor pumped well water onto their property for over three months straight, 24/7. Is that correct? Yeah, 24/7. And it flowed across my property, killed my asparagus patch, killed my trees, flowed onto my neighbor's property, across their horse field, into their horse barn. And that neighbor came up and complained to me that water coming off my property was flowing into their barn. I did go to, uh, the zoning inspector and he sort of indicated it was a health department issue. So.
That's actually always, always a challenge because if water is supposed to flow in a direction, that's the direction that, you know.
Rainwater.
I, I understand that it's being pumped up and then flowing. I understand that it's being pumped up and then flowing across, but.
So if it's being pumped up, they're actually changing the natural flow of water.
They created a, I can't call it a designated stream, an undesigned stream.
Wouldn't be the same if somebody's emptying out their pond or there's something, essentially.
Doesn't take very long to pump a million gallons of water from a pond.
True, but.
This was way more than a million gallons of water.
The county is used, but also have something to say about.
But I'm just saying, I brought it up to the zoning inspector and, and in particular about 4.8 nuisance, and he said, it's not a nuisance. And I don't mean to complicate what you're doing, but we had an example of light and there's another example of water. I don't even know how you would work.
So do we wanna look into any verbiage with respect to nuisances now, or do we want to put it on our list for another potential text amendment?
I think if we're gonna keep, or if we're gonna elaborate on nuisances, we really have to define it. I mean, just to put vibration or to put odor, dust, there's really not any teeth to that. I mean, I drive my tractor on the dirt paddock and there's dust everywhere. So I'm like, jeez.
It might be worthwhile to push nuisances off to the next one because, again, there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, we can hope that the zoning department is tracking it, so we can use it for future topics, but if there's nothing we can do about it, there's no urgency to get it in.
I agree. And I think that it will require a robust discussion, probably almost as long as the short-term housing discussion, so.
Let's see, in, in chapter five, section 5.2, I'm just amending it to include the new name for the B2 district and then the addition of the B3 district within the listing of zoning districts.
Right.
What section was it?
5.2.
Zoning districts.
All it says is the zoning districts and their identifying symbol R as follows, R1 residential district, R2 residential district, large lots, B1 general business district, B2 light business district, B3 historical town center district, I1 office light industrial. Did you find it, Mr. Stone?
On mine, it's on page 45, but I've got markup changes on, so it might be on a different page.
It's page 31.
Yes, save you a minute, save you a minute.
Now, there were two documents that I hear each mark up in them.
Sorry about that.
I hit the wrong one up.
Okay.
Did you find it?
I see where you're at.
Perfect. C and D. So that was the only change in the chapter five and chapter six. Let's see, I had amended in temporarily subsection 6R1.3 conditionally permitted uses short-term dwelling and short-term owner occupied. I'll remove that since we are tabling that with just definitions currently. The, an addition would actually be in 6R1.2D, accessory buildings and structures. We want to include solar and wind array. Which page are you on?
It's page 38.
38. It's interesting, why did they do that? They had, they referenced chapter 18 in six, but they don't refer to solar because chapter 18. We, we did wood-fired boilers, hydraulic wood furnaces, all of that stuff, and then we added in solar and wind afterwards.
So solar and wind. I'll tweak that language to count roof mounted, ground mounted, but I understand the, so it's solar and winds, energy. I'll figure what that exactly should be, but good catch on that.
Do you have to spell them out, or can you just say alternative energies?
Yeah.
Pursuant to.
Yeah, chapter 18 is identified alternative energy facilities.
What happens to alternative? Great call, so we'll just.
Water wheel.
Right.
Say alternative energy facilities pursuant to chapter 18.
Yeah.
Again, that was the boilerplate given to us.
Not a problem. If I can spell pursuant correctly.
Okay.
Okay, this is now, and I've changed this a little bit more since the version I sent you, and we're running out of time anyway, so I'm just going to introduce this topic and then I'll send you the new language that I provided, and then you can look at it for Thursday. If you turn to subsection 6R1.6. This deals with accessory buildings and structures within the residential districts. This is for R1, but it's similarly in R2. And what we say currently is that accessory building structures in R1 residential district shall conform to the location and coverage contained in this section. Accessory building structures shall not be closer than 15 feet from the principal building, shall not have a setback of not less than the principal building, and shall conform to the side and rear yard setbacks of the district in which it is located. And so my initial stab at it was just to, I think, amend accessory buildings and structures shall not have, shall not be closer than five feet. And I think that that was the wrong direction to go in. I spoke to the zoning department, they made a different recommendation, I agree with them. What I suggest that we do is just in A1, strike out structures. So accessory buildings, which would basically be, be barns, because it's a, it's, it's the building with four walls, shall not be closer than 15 feet. I then suggest adding a section two, which says accessory structures excluding accessory buildings, swimming pools and fences, shall, shall not be closer than five feet from the principal building, shall have the front yard setback, that's the exact same as section one, and conform to the side and rear same as one. The reason for that is because of gazebos and trellises and other things that you might have as a patio structure, but you might not want 15 feet away from your home. And so this is one area where we have had people want to put a structure closer than 15 feet from their, closer to their home than 15 feet, and because of this limitation, they couldn't. And so as we worked through it and we, when we were working on the fee schedule, we actually sat down with the assistant fire chief as well, and we tried to understand where this 15-foot guideline came from. And there is, there is some, some language within the fire code that deals with if there's an open flame and having a certain distance away from the home, even if it's underneath of a structure, but really nothing pertinent to this. And if you think about it, you can have a patio that's attached to your home, a covered patio that's attached to your home that extends out, and so why shouldn't you be able to have a similar gazebo that's very close to your home, it's just a detached structure, but still closer than 15 feet? So that's where this language has developed from, is the idea that why are we requiring gazebos and trellises and things of that nature to be 15 feet away from your home?
So you're, you're saying accessory buildings.
Accessory.
Stay 15 feet.
Correct. That would be basically barns or anything that has four enclosed walls.
And add a, add a number two or add another bullet, I guess.
Correct.
For accessory structures excluding accessory buildings and sheds.
Except excluding accessory buildings, swimming pools and fences would be what I would exclude from accessory structure language.
So I can build a shed within five feet?
No, because that's an accessory building, which still requires 15 foot.
But buildings and sheds are structures by our definition.
Correct, but they're also buildings. And so the narrower of the two is an accessory building. So an accessory building shall not be closer than 15 feet. So we have that as, as one. Let me pull it up on the.
I, I, I see your intent, I'm maybe a little hung up on the definition of, of building versus structure.
And that's why, I just want to introduce it so you can look at it for Thursday. Remember that if you look at our definition for an accessory building. And that is. Yes, page six is what I have for a building. The definition of a building is a structure that has a roof supported by or suspended by columns or walls, which is completely enclosed by walls that are solid or may have windows, and is intended for use as a shelter or enclosure for persons, animals, or property. The term building does not include any vehicle, trailer not on a foundation or other movable object. So because a shed is enclosed, it constitutes an accessory building. But a gazebo is not enclosed, it's not enclosed by walls that are solid or have windows, and it's not intended to shelter, generally not intended to shelter persons, animals, or property. So it's an accessory structure, but it is not an accessory building. Every accessory building is an accessory structure, but not every accessory structure is an accessory building.
Correct.
So under this, the rain shelters that people might put to the foot of their drive to keep the kids sheltered in snow or rain, or waiting for the school bus, are probably all illegal, because they're not 15 foot off the property line, they're right at the property line in many cases, actually, and, and right on public land.
I'd probably agree with you, but that's under the current, where this, what I'm proposing is a broadening of what we currently.
Yeah, I just.
And again, you're, you're looking to differentiate the structure such as something like an open gazebo or something like that.
Trying to allow those sorts of, of unit, you know, structures to be brought closer to the house, and then sheds are something that, that might contain more flammable contents inside of them or, or, you know.
Can you elaborate on patio? Mention patio.
A covered patio. I was referring to a covered patio as an example, that would be attached to your home, and it's very much like in a gazebo, but because it's attached to your home, it gets to be right next to your home. But if you separate detach it from your home, you now have to push it out 15 feet from your home. And what's the justification for having a covered patio 15 feet from your home? If it's detached, like it's attached, it can be right against your home.
But isn't a covered patio actually a porch?
Correct. It's part of the home.
A non-enclosed porch.
Yes. It's not an accessory of any sort.
So is a chicken coop a, a building or a structure?
Yeah, it shelters animals. If you got us through an agriculture.
Doesn't matter, it's agriculture.
Trick question.
Yeah, that's an easy one.
The, the next little hiccup on here is, if you're looking at the current one, 6R1.6A2D, in no case shall an accessory building slash structure occupy an area greater than 10% of the rear yard. Should we exempt lakes and ponds from calculations?
Which number are you on?
Page 43, same, same thing, just go to right above the, the.
Oh, okay, yeah. Are, are you saying that?
I have to think about this. What I'm saying is you should not include a pond as 10% of the rear yard setback, or 10, 10% of the rear yard if I want to build a shed and I have space.
I'm wondering, first of all, we have to get to why, how are you treating a pond as an accessory structure?
That I believe that's actually defined.
We have, that's what I, I was looking for, accessory structure is a subordinate structure, customary incident to and located upon the same lot occupied by the principal building in use.
You know what, it's a pond.
And then I looked at pond, and it just says a water impoundment having a natural bottom.
It's, it's not the definition.
In four, is it in?
Chapter four is about ponds, because that's where the swing.
I think we discussed that at one time.
Ponds. 411B, all structures, including embankments, dikes, and other water retaining structures associated with a pond or lake, requiring a permit shall be located at least 50 feet from any road right of way. So right there, we're defining it as a structure.
But we're, we're defining like a dam.
Correct.
That's holding back the waters.
And this is very clearly not an accessory structure, because this also says it can be located, it has to be 15 feet from the road right of way, it does not have to be behind the home. Whereas an accessory structure is required to be behind the home.
I don't know, actually, after I made my statement, I looked at 411A, which supports what Matt's saying.
As well as 411C, determining front side and rear yard setbacks. I mean, it's just entirely inconsistent with.
It's entire.
Well, it's entirely inconsistent with, with chapter six.
What do you mean by that?
Ponds are allowed in front of your home.
It's a special type of structure.
Right, but it's not excluded from a structure as defined in chapter six. That's why I'm, it should be excluded from structure. I would, I would be.
But then you're running into the problem of someone putting a pond right on their property line.
Well, no.
It overflows into their neighbor's yard.
411 has setbacks for ponds. Side, rear, and front. It just has, it, it's a standalone.
I think this is a Pandora's box.
I think so, too.
That came in.
I also wonder, because 4.11, 411A says shall be considered, considered structures for purposes of permits.
Right.
It doesn't say for purposes, you know, it doesn't just say shall be considered structures, period. It goes on to say for purposes of permits.
Shouldn't, maybe if we are cleaning up, the word permit only.
Right.
Structures for this permit, so if I want to put in a pond, we're saying, yeah, you're putting in a structure, you have to get that permitted.
There's no other reason to say for purposes of permit.
It almost feels like what you just said.
Adding the word only.
Yeah, because then that would take the, take the ambiguity out of it for section six that you were mentioning.
I would be okay with, I think that that's a relatively minor cleanup, that we could include that within our amendments without potentially opening a Pandora's box, if that's something that you guys would be in favor of. I'm in favor.
Before I move away from this, can I show you the rest of this language and then we'll go back to pond? Okay, so we talked about the proposal, and again, I'll send you this language, so you have it Friday. We talked about the proposal of accessory buildings being maintained at no closer than 15 feet, accessory structures excluding accessory buildings, swimming pools, and
accessory structures excluding accessory buildings, swimming pools and fences, being no closer than five feet, that's to try to cover gazebos. Key words called trellises, they're not trellises. What are those open air structures?
Perilous.
Thank you, perilous. Yes. So then I also amended a section for swimming pools. And I think that this one has some question, but we'll have to, if someone has some language for it, great. If not, then I'm not sure what to do. So swimming, I have swimming pools shall not be closer than 15 feet from the principal building. Very similar to an accessory building language. The challenge that we have is that people will often want hot tubs very close to their home. As it currently is written, they can't be any closer than 15 feet. And as I've proposed it, they can't be closer than 15 feet. And the reason being is because a swimming pool is a, a hot tub constitutes a swimming pool, basically, as we've described a swimming pool in our, in our language. And I tried to work through language. The closest I can get is that hot tubs can be mobile in nature because they can be fully, you know, self-contained other than your electrical plug. And if it's that kind, we exclude it from this and we put it within the five-foot section. And if it's something that's more built in as a typical swimming pool, it would meet the definition of a swimming pool and be within the swimming pool section of 15 feet. But I couldn't get to language that I liked to where I said, okay, we can broaden it out to have hot tubs be something other than 15 feet, which is why I left them within swimming pools at 15 feet. So I'm not restricting swimming pools any further than what they currently have. But I'm also not finding a way to allow hot tubs to be closer than 15 feet from the home. So it's just something to think about. And then the final one is, if you remember, I've excluded fences from the five-foot setback and the 15-foot setback. Instead, I just said fences shall comply with the requirements of section 4.9. That basically will enable fences to abut the property line as I think most people have believed that they would be permitted to anyway. So that's why I've taken them out of the other two sections.
Marcus, going back to the swimming pool, so.
Oops, I'm sorry.
It, it's as if you were reading my notes here, because when I read through this, I'm like, wait a second, right? That's the first thing that comes to my mind is like a hot tub. And I, I looked at a couple of different municipalities and townships as I was reading through this, for the, the meeting earlier this month. And I, as, as we have it, you can consider a, a, a swimming pool and a hot tub or a spa, right? It's all one in the same. And there are some municipalities that leave it as one definition. I think Strongsville was one that I mentioned here where it was basically, it's, it's one meaning. Forest Park Township, not sure where it is. They went, they went to the other end of the spectrum and defined all kinds of different, different swimming and sauna-type activities, you know, separately. And I think if you want to bring them closer, I don't think we have a choice other than to define them uniquely.
Yeah. And just for the record, I want to point out swimming pools is section 4.12 when you're looking for it on your own.
So why are we saying that swimming pools can't be closer than 15 feet?
Well, for one, if the fire department comes and they need to get ladders back there, swimming pool can take up a large section of the back of the property. And so from that perspective, it makes sense to keep them further back. And then also, you wouldn't want children to use the, the home roof. Let's say you have a one-story roof that juts out, you wouldn't want them to jump off of that into the swimming pool. So that's why we have as distances away as well. That's what I believe is the two rationale for why we're keeping them 15 feet alone.
Say more the first one.
Yeah, I would too. If some contract concrete distributor decided it has to be 15 or 20 feet.
So that one, we can talk about more on Thursday. I just wanted to introduce the topic to you. And I said, as I said, I'll send you this language first thing tomorrow, so you can chew on it as well and come up with your own thoughts as to how we want to proceed on that. I think that that is, I cloned the language to the 6.2R2, so you'll see that in 6.2R2 as well. And outside of that, I don't think I made any other changes on this document. There might have been one substantive change, which we can go over at the next meeting on the document that mostly just contains typographical errors. But that, that's basically it. So we're at 8:57, so if it's okay, I'd like to provide an opportunity for public to comment. And then we'll try to adjourn this meeting and then we'll resume on Thursday. Anyone have a comment?
A very short one. Accessory structures were amended in the May 1st, 2019 amendments. You might want to go back and look at the minutes of why it was amended then. And that may give you some clarity on the hot tubs and the ponds, why are ponds a structure? They were not a structure until 2019.
You said that was May of 2019?
2019 amendments.
Thank you. I lost my piece of paper with notes, but I'm sure I'll find it. Great, are there any other comments from the commission? Perfect, very productive. Thank you all for attending. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, the first, that'll be our normal meeting at 7:00 PM. I look forward to seeing everyone then. Motion to adjourn at 8:58.
Second.
I'll make the motion seconded by Manley. All in favor?
I, I'll oppose.
Unanimous motion adjourned.
Do we have minutes now?